And are here tonight, so welcome. Thank you very much. We appreciate everybody coming out and taking part of the process. Um, for legal purposes, uh, both boards are bound by North Carolina statutes. And we have, there is an open meeting law in the state of North Carolina. And that is that everybody, you have to have an open meeting with any board that would accommodate the crowd. So we are pushing the limit here tonight, but it has been said if the sheriff's department can make sure that everybody is accommodated and can hear, and I think they've already done that. And some folks just come in, everybody's good. So with that being said, I think all the bases have been covered, uh, and we are going to get this meeting started. And by law, we have to call our meeting to order because we do have a quorum, and I think the, uh, the AMI board is here and they have a quorum as well. So at this time, so at this time, I would like to call our meeting to order. This is the Yancey County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting, July the 11th, 2023. Call this meeting to order, and it's a very, very short agenda as far as we're concerned. So has everybody had an opportunity to look over the agenda?
Yes.
I'd like to hear a motion. I have a motion to approve there here. Second, now the second, I'll just say a favor, say aye. Ding, not opposed, motion carries. And at this time, we will let the AMI board open. Oh, oh, because that's gonna be real awkward.
Yes.
It's not like this meeting's awkward anyway, so let's make sure.
Just hold it close and start talking.
Okay, we good? All right. Welcome, everyone. It's so glad to see such a, a full house. Um, I am gonna turn it over to Jody Higgins as our board chair.
Thank you. Okay, I call the, uh, this meeting of the Yancey County Public Library Board to order on July the 11th, 2023. And I need a motion to, um...
To the additional?
Yeah, a mission minute.
Yes, that's me.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just gonna explain what a mission minute is. Generally, at our public library board meetings, whether that's be our local advisory meetings and then also our governing board, I usually have a mission minute to explain how we are meeting the mission of the public library system. So our mission is to help communities create and maintain a foundation for literacy, economic development, and democracy. That mission is also in process of being changed because we just went through a community assessment during the month of June where we heard feedback from all of our citizens and patrons. So we are in process of changing that mission. However, a way that we meet our mission and especially in regards to literacy and democracy is that we use book displays to display our books. And I am giving that as an example of how we meet our mission and how we inform the public that we serve all members of the public and we particularly serve marginalized groups of people. And when we do that, we recognize everyone. It is also a way to, when you think of bookstores and how they market their materials, um, think of it in that way to your library system. When we make displays, people see the books, they want to check them out if they have interest in a particular subject. Um, I mean, it could be on the gentleman who spoke last night, thermodynamics, and we could have a display on that. Um, so Wayne will speak more during the branch manager report regarding all the displays Yancey Public Library does. So that mission minute is just the value of our book displays, and I'll speak more about that with my director's report.
Thank you, Amber. Uh, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion to approve the, the agenda.
Sixty. Sixty, thank you. Okay, at this point, we're gonna have, uh, Wayne, your current branch manager.
For those who don't know me, I'm Wayne Edwards, the branch manager here at the Yancey County Public Library, and I'm just gonna give a little report about things that we've done over the last year, um, and about things around the library. Um, now, since our last meeting, um, we have continued storytime with Ms. Amber, uh, and it's been a great success. Uh, during storytime, Curious George has visited, uh, at which time we gave away free Curious George books to all the kids. Uh, this is our mascot, Curious George. Uh, we have had fiddlers, um, we have had, uh, storytellers over our summer program. We've done chalk drawing outside with everyone. Um, we had an escape room here at the library. Uh, we've done rock painting. We had, in this very room, a wildlife rehab, uh, exhibit where live animals came in and everyone just had a blast. Um, this past Saturday, uh, to continue our summer programs, we had, uh, working with PATH, we had an area list and an acrobat out on the square, uh, where we also gave away books. Um, so we've been doing a lot this year. Um, we are, uh, right now, we have, are hosting a Tai Chi class, um, in the mornings twice a week for, uh, I see some of our people there. Um, and, uh, we, before that, hosted a balance class for, uh, folks who are ever... The Tai Chi class is for balance and for folks with arthritis, and it's going great guns. We also, earlier in the year, had tax preparation by VITA volunteers. Um, we had a number of people come in for that. Um, we have a continuing homemaker series going right now where Ashley English is coming in. She's going to be teaching, uh, beekeeping and how to make up your own winter herbal apothecary. Um, we've begun a series with, uh, Plotdown Books, um, our local books at work, excuse me, um, to bring authors into the library. We've most recently had Silas House, who is, uh, the poet laureate of Kentucky and a seven-time New York Times bestseller. Um, Julia Franks, uh, released her newest book here. Uh, Janine Jackson, a new children's author, uh, debbie her book here. And this Thursday, we have Patricia Henderson coming, who is an Appalachian author. Um, in our gallery, we have had the Arts and Education Show that showcased, uh, the artwork of children in homeschooling and Montessori school and the various public schools around the area, and that was great. And right now, if you haven't seen it, you've got to see our display of, uh, movie posters. It's a member, a memorabilia belonging to Bob Wilson, one of our library neighbors here. Uh, it's been great. Um, our open house on May 30th was well attended, and that was a lot of fun. Um, and as Amber said, I would also like to mention, uh, the book displays we've had over the last year, and I'm just gonna hit the highlights because if I stand here and read all of them off to you, it's gonna be a long night. Um, we have done book displays on local authors, on westerns. Um, we've done books, uh, book displays on flowers, on ice cream, um, books in tech, about technology and sci-fi. We've done National Friendship Day, books that were made into movies, Carolina Lit Fest books, Adult National Romance Month. Uh, yeah, okay. I didn't see anybody bother about the Bodice Rivers, but, um, we've done Band Book Week, uh, National Library Card Sign-Up Line, Fall Feed Books, Spanish Heritage Month, James Bond 007 Day. We did a display of books with orange covers. We've had a huge display of home school resources, Native American Heritage Month, books about food. Uh, we had a giant Monopoly game on our big table down there where you could roll the dice and pick what genre book you read next. Um, we have had displays on Christmas, Hanukkah, Diwali, Kwanzaa, um, graphic novels, Thanksgiving, Father's Day, Mother's Day, Easter, Christmas. Uh, so we've done a lot of book displays here. Uh, for the most part, they are done by my lovely assistant, Brittany, and she is amazing at doing displays. So, um, we will have those here, and we hope they help encourage people to read. But I wanna talk about one other thing. I talk about special things that we do here, and whenever I do my reports, but I wanna mention just what we do every day. Here at the library, just say the last six months, we have helped innumerable people do job applications, applications for social security, applications for disability. We have helped people get green cards, passports. I have helped elderly people who've never touched a computer get their driver's license online. Every day, we have people come in and they get their master's degree online here. We've proctored tests. We've made people happy with books and kids happy with coloring, with crayons, with crafts, with art. Every day, I use my, um, notary public stamp to help people change their name, get a house, buy a car, um, collect their loved ones' insurance who've passed away, you know, get disability for someone, get medication, get help from pharmacies and pharmaceutical companies. This is just every day. We do these things every day, and that's just a smidgen, that's just part of us. We do these things every day for our community. And we have...
Lady M.
I did not pay her to say that. Um, and we are delighted, especially to have our young readers here. We have toys for the kids, we have a playhouse, we have lots of fun things to do. So thank you all for being here, and thank you all for using your library.
And now we're gonna hear from, uh, Amber, our man, uh, it's been a long day. I've moved a lot of chairs.
Here's Amber. All right, it's really hard for me to sit down and speak, so I'm gonna go ahead and stand. Um, because I only had three minutes at last night's meeting, um, I'm gonna go over a few things that you'll say, "I already heard that," but, um, to have to, I have to explain it to you again. Uh, I wanna first off, I tell you that you may not know this, but in the past 20-plus years, um, Yancey County government has continuously supported their public library. Okay, thank you, Bonnie. Um, I wanted to expressly say that because every budget request I have made, they have fulfilled funding that budget. The budget for Yancey County Public Library for fiscal year 2023 to '24, that budget is already funded. So I say that to them because I want to thank them that what they do is representing Yancey County, um, just like the public library represents Yancey County. So I really need to preface it with that for you to know that when you live in a neighborhood like we do, and we have these neighbors and we go to school with, um, our children go to school with other children, like, for us to be loving and kind and, and kind to our neighbor, that's something I take a lot of pride in in living here, and I would guarantee, not to speak for you, but that the commissioners would say the same thing. So I wanna start out with that. And now some boring library information. So, um, what I wanna talk about a little bit is why the regional library system is essential. So last night, I could only state a few things, but financially, it is important for me to stress that state aid gives us funds for the books, technology that you see. We are redoing our computer labs in all libraries, and that is funded through state aid or also through grants and private donations. That funding does not come out of the Yancey County library budget. So I want you to explain, I want to explain that we receive funding and for multiple aspects. Um, but without state aid, uh, the technology we have wouldn't exist. We have access to LSTA, those are Library Services and Technology Act grants. In the past two years, I think I've received over 10 grants from the state library. That's not counting the two federal grants we've received. So I can tell you I do my work as far as grant writing. Access to NC Live, the database that provides thousands of online services which are available to only the largest of public libraries and academic libraries in the state. At the regional level, we have a full-time financial manager, who he was sorry he couldn't be here this evening. We have a children's librarian, a bookmobile librarian, and outreach librarian. I could spend literally an hour talking to you about how significant outreach and bookmobile are to our counties from a regional perspective. Without that, there are so many people who would not receive that service. We also receive funds from state aid for children programming, materials, summer reading programming, the library materials, the books you check out, those funds come from state aid. General technology support is mostly paid for by state aid, not by local governments. We have an integrated library system, which is through Cardinal. That allows so many of our patrons to borrow books throughout the state. And while that is available, if you were to leave the system and be a county, you would have to pay for that as well. And as far as limiting materials to people, that doesn't limit materials, that's a further access of materials across the state. Um, our annual audit, the majority of that is paid by the regional system, not by county governments. So I'm just trying to give you an idea of what a regional library system provides and how county and town governments benefit from a regional system. Our state aid application, as I told you last night, is based on eligibility. So I'm not gonna get into the maintenance of effort form and what we have to show as far as how county governments are funding us. Yancey County commissioners have always been an example, region-wide, of funding our library and the state matching those funds. I have always been proud of you all. State aid is appropriated by the General Assembly, and I think I explained this about per capita income, service area, but because we're a regional system, we receive an additional block grant. Those block grants, I am working at the state level to try to get those block grants to be more funding, but currently, right now, they're just under $36,000 a piece. So we receive block grants, but then we also receive an additional one because we are a regional library system. And do you know why state aid exists, why it was created? It was created to fund regional library systems. That's a big deal. It means that when they hear me speak and they hear me speak about our great rural area, they wanna make sure they prioritize that in the funds they give us. So I wanted to finish out speaking about that when I was talking about it last night. But what I also want to get to, as displays as a resource. So Wayne talked about the many book displays we do in our libraries. Um, I believe we will move forward on discussing with this with commissioners, and they may have suggestions of what they'd like to see. But first, I want you to hear from me about what book displays do for libraries. So library-initiated displays support the mission of the library by providing users with additional opportunities for accessing information, education, and recreation. We have a library bill of rights, and it states, "Books and other library resources should be provided for the interest, information, and enlightenment of all people the community library serves." Library displays increase awareness of programs. They let people know that there are books that exist that we may not know or hear. Um, library-initiated, initiated displays include, but are not limited to lectures, exhibits, community forums, programs, wellness programs, storytimes, continue education, just information. We do displays about voter rights. Library-initiated displays utilize library worker expertise, expertise. Let me go back to that for just a minute. The individuals who have the ability here at our libraries to decide on the library displays that they put up, they're professionally trained, educated individuals who make those decisions. I wanna, I wanna really specify that because when you question that, you are questioning the individuals who do this for their living, for their work, who feel like we have done what we need to do and been, um, trained by the state to be able to select materials that are appropriate for all of our patrons. So that's important to respect that. Displays also introduce users and potential users to library resources and the library's role as a facilitator of information access. We may even participate cooperatively with other organizations. A great example of that is the Domestic Violence Center. We've done displays in the past about domestic violence and partnered with those organizations. Uh, so that's just an example. But the, here's the trick, libraries don't discriminate. We do not discriminate. I want to specify that because it is so important. When we put up displays, or let's say you wanna give me a comment or make a complaint and say, "I'd like to see a display about this," we will talk to you about that, if it is discriminatory, if it is necessary, if the community wants it. When Wayne decides on displays and the staff support that, he is making that decision based on what the community wants. I think you can see from this room that there are people here who use the library, who they know what they want to see. So we take that into consideration, that's important to us. It's also about our collection development policy, which is we add books that are imperative for our community. We also have to look at books that aren't represented well. So if we have a collection of books and we haven't represented a group of people well, we have to order those books. That's called balancing the collection in library speak. So we do have an obligation to do these things to be a good, dependable library. So, just to end, socially excluded, marginalized, and underrepresented people, not just the majority, should be able to see themselves reflected in the resources, programs, and displays the library offers. That is something we as librarians are very passionate about. We actively seek to include a variety of programming and book displays that represent diversity of genres, formats, ideas, and expressions with a multitude of viewpoints and cultural representation. We have to, we have to reflect the diversity of everyone in our community. And I just wanna end with that. Thank you.
As you can see, why we're so proud of her. She's one of the best library directors in the state.
And she was born and raised up here in Yancey County.
Okay, uh, we have a couple of items on our agenda that we, we have no committee reports, I don't believe.
We do not.
And we have no unfinished business. New business, the Yancey County Board of Commissioners, items for discussion.
Yes, that's when we get to talk together.
We're at that point.
So we can interject?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Amber, for everything that you said. We wholeheartedly agree. Um, totally understand. We didn't know all of that, and I'm positive that everybody in this room did not know all of, of what the library done. And I'm proud of our library, proud of the way that it's, this done. It's been a huge misconception. It's been a huge misconception about what our intent is. But anyway, we're gonna get to all that, uh, as we further our discussion with the board. Um, and I, and I want to make, make it very clear tonight, there very well may not be any resolve tonight as far as anything that we've done because there's a process, and there's things, and that's why, uh, and when I made my motion last month, uh, that we get some of these things done, and we have found out some things since then because of the research that was in my motion. Um, and, and I explained it, and y'all can research the minutes, whatever you want to do. But I explained it, uh, for a reason, and we agree with everything that you are doing with the library. Uh, and where it comes that we want to dissolve the library or define the library or anything like that is, is a misconception because it's not true. Uh, we think that you're doing a great job, and we appreciate every single thing that you do, all, all the work that goes on, so we thank you, and we appreciate it. If we didn't, we wouldn't fund you. But anyway, and we always have, and we always will, that's, so we understand a little bit more about the way the state works and the way things have gone. We didn't fully understand all that. We're researching and we're understanding a few things. So anyway, that gets brought in to clear the air about a couple things there. Um, what we wanna talk about tonight, some, some aspects of stuff is, uh, terms of the local board. Now, we'll discuss regional board at a later time, but terms of the local board. And we've got the constitution and bylaws of the Yancey County Public Library. Uh, so we want you to explain to us the terms of local board. Uh, is it six members, uh, on the board, or is there eight? What, what is, what is your...
We have seven board members. Oh, yeah, thank you. So we have seven board members.
Okay.
Um, we have to have a minimum of six, and they have to be appointed by the Yancey County Board of Commissioners. Um, all bylaws within the system for advisory boards are very similar. There's a few different distinguishing factors, but for this, it states that members shall be appointed for a term of three years, which shall begin at the annual meeting held each fall. A member may serve no more than two consecutive terms. Previous member may be reappointed after those two terms. To explain that, let me, um, explain that at the regional level, a governing board, it has, you can serve two consecutive terms, but you have to rotate off. And that's because the regional board is the governing board of the library, essentially my boss, if that helps you. So the regional board has to follow those terms. We have a rotation sheet that they have to follow. At the local level, that board is advisory. It means they don't set policy or procedures, but they can give, if you had a policy recommendation, you could give that to the local board, and they could then say, "We'd like to present this at the regional board meeting." So also, these advisory board members and regional board members are appointed by the commissioners. The library director has nothing to do with board members. That would be a conflict of interest. So those names come through the library, they come from volunteers who say, "I'd like to serve." They come from board members who say, "I know this retired teacher who would like to serve," and then that goes to you and you appoint them. So that's how, does that help?
Well, I mean, it helps the public. Uh, we know all that, so, oh, we, we've known all that, but we're just wanting to let the public understand how the process works. So thank you for that. Any questions from anybody else?
It's got eight, this sheet has eight on it.
Right, so there's eight, there's eight on your board now, but there's supposed to be seven member, board members and a minimum, a minimum of six.
There are only seven board members on this local board.
Okay, is Alan Larkin on the board?
He is.
Okay, and Jody Higgins?
He's right here, Jody Higgins.
Burl Carroll?
Yes.
Yeah, that's Burl. Suzie McKenna? Julia Fox?
Julia cannot be here this evening, she's in class.
But she's on the board?
She is.
Patty McCow?
Patty is not on the board.
She's not on the board, okay. And then Gail Parker? And then Anna Webb?
Anna Webb is not on the board. Jody Higgins is supposed to be on the board as well as Jeanette Maddox. Jody Higgins?
Okay.
Do you remember her?
I mean, she's on.
Oh, did you? Sorry. Then forgive me. Jeanette's not on there.
Yes, Jeanette Maddox. And if you want me to, I can explain that process, but you may not want me to get into that.
And, and that's not necessary.
Okay.
And is that, Lena, does that balance with everything that we have?
Well, we've still got to get some on, the board of commissioners having approved has not. Amber sent me an email with a request for, and I'd have to look back at, is a request for Jeanette Maddox. I believe Suzie McKenna was coming off the regional board.
That's correct.
And she was gonna stay on the local board, but Jeanette Maddox was gonna go to the regional board.
And to serve, she has to serve locally as well as regionally. And those emails were sent in 2022.
And then Jody Higgins was gonna go to the regional board.
Yes.
She's the chairman.
Yes.
And she was gonna serve as the regional board, on the regional board.
Yes, that's correct.
And we haven't approved her.
You have not.
And that was from 2022.
That's correct.
Um, so those three right there needs to be reapproved and then reappointed. And then we have where Burl Carroll was appointed and Julia Fox to serve... to serve one three-year term on both the local and the regional library boards. And that was November of 2019 that the commissioners approved that. And it says for a three-year term. So I didn't, you know, and we talked that it's unlimited terms necessarily, but three-year terms, they can serve two. And it's a little confusing between the regional and the local. And then who's coming off and who's rotating off.
You are absolutely correct to say that it can be confusing.
It can be, and then we have our local bylaws, and we have our regional ones, but we have our contract too.
Yes.
So some's two, some's three years. And so there's a little bit of juggling there that we may not, you know, be able to keep up with. But we rely on you to get those to us, and if it's three years, or six years, or whatever. But I guess that would come up before the commissioners every three years from like Burl Carroll and Julia Fox. We just want to make sure, we try to keep a list. We have numerous boards that we appoint to, and the commissioners serve on. I myself serve on.
Can you hand us the microphone?
Sure. From Travel and Tourism, you know, we do senior center meals on wheels. We do 23 different departments, from the Health Department Board, the DSS Board, the Board of Elections. There's different things that is inside of the local government. And so numerous boards, not to mention the Workforce Development Board, the High Country Cog, and we, you know.
That makes sense.
So it's a little...
Just to interject, if I send an email that states that I have reappointments or vacancies, I do expect an answer.
Yeah, and follow up with us if you don't get it. Be sure and follow up. And give a letter, I mean, sure. It's good to come back and follow up with us. We juggle many, many wheels there. So don't hesitate to knock on our door, don't hesitate to present to our board, and come. We like that talk, we like the conversation. So I'm not sure about Burl Carroll and Julia Fox.
They rotated off the regional board. They served two consecutive three-year terms. It has been 20-plus years of an understanding between all county governments and town government, that if a board member rotates off the regional board, if they are found to be valuable to the local board, they can stay on. If that's something you want to change, then that's something you can ask for and completely do. Because as a local advisory board, we take, we take your example for what you want our library board to do in regards to terms. You could literally say to me, "I want a one-term, three-year," and we could change our bylaws if the board agreed with that. So it's, you can put a commissioner on our board, and they can serve as a representative so that you have communication between the two. We're the only library, Yancey County, that doesn't have a commission or town council representative. It's something I highly recommend. We also have two vacancies on the Yancey Library Board. We are welcome to put another board member on there.
And so then too, the bylaws that we got online just says six, if I read it right. I may be wrong.
It says a minimum of six members.
We may not have the updated one then.
That is very possible, because those bylaws have been updated probably four times, and we ourselves have to go back to read it. But it was that word that was changed about 10 years ago, I believe. It used to say that the board had to have six members, and now it says a minimum of six members.
Yeah, then we're reading the old version, because this one says the Board of Trustees shall consist of six members. And we got it offline on your website, so I see what it's easy to...
Probably we're out to update the website.
It's easy to overlook some things, I get it. So anyway, and I think it would be good to have, and we have talked numerous times, Amber, and had good conversations, and I think it would be good for that to be put in the bylaws. And so numerous, you know, 10 years down the road, if it's six, if it's eight, that may need to change. But I think it would be good to have representation from the Board of Commissioners, at least one member of the board. Well, and the town, that's probably the town of Spruce Pine, if that's what you're talking about.
Yes, when I was talking about that, see, we have three counties, and then we have Spruce Pine Town, so for us, we would want a county commissioner.
So we would just need to put that in the bylaws, and then they would know it for years to come.
I love the idea of putting it in the bylaws.
Sure.
What our goal here tonight is to make sure that we have, sorry. What our goal here tonight is to make sure that we have the same set of bylaws that you do. We're on agreement to how many and who is going to serve. And we have in our notes by appointment to include a commissioner, and that, the director, because we've been, in the past, there has, all department heads have not been required to come. We would like to have you come at least a couple of times, or maybe even a quarter. We'll work that out to give an update on the library.
Love to.
I mean, that's, we want that to happen.
Yes, yes.
And we're going to make some bylaws about that.
Yes, yes, we are, we are.
And that would include financials. We require that with every department that we fund, or help fund, just an update at least once a year on financials, how things are going.
Do you feel like that would be necessary, since we have a commissioner representative on our board who would be able to...
Absolutely, that's what we're doing with all departments, even the departments that we serve.
But I'm not a department head, I'm a regional library director, so it's a little different.
You're right, but we fund this. It's the public's money, it's not our money. It belongs to the citizens of Yancey County. And if there's a problem with giving financials, then...
Oh, gosh, no, he'd be fine to do that.
And it's, we just would like to...
I was just trying to understand.
We just like to have a financial update once a year. I mean, it's the public's money, it's not ours. We're fiscally responsible for 18,000 people and the money that goes through here in a 30-something million-dollar budget.
Well, not to brag, but our audit is plain as a whistle.
And so is ours. And that's what we want to hear. That's why we want to hear. We have public meetings, so everyone can hear that in ten minutes.
That's good, we'll do it.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody else? Commissioner Leffler was telling about, I want to be clear on how many board members that we're going to have, whether it's going to be six or seven, eight, and without a... Go ahead.
I want to be clear on, we've got two vacancies. And then you've got Jody Higgins, who's not been appointed, serving. So there's three. And then, so the 2019, Burl and Julia, so are they up for reappointment as well?
I don't know, that depends on if you want to change what we have generally been doing for 20-plus years. Do you want to keep them at two terms and to be reappointed?
Well, we want to go by a bylaw. We don't want, we want to stick with a bylaw. Because I think there's been some things that just...
That's fine.
...in agreement.
Do you understand that you'd be the only county that does that? And you're fine with that?
Yeah, we are Yancey County, we're not any other county. And I think that's the whole point.
Okay, so you want to limit local board members to two terms?
We'll have that discussion on the limit. We just want to make sure that we, in an agreement that somebody had a handshake on 20 years ago, because this board's going to change, there's going to be future boards that change, that board that done that 20 years ago is no longer here.
I understand that.
So we just want to make sure that we have on paper, we have a record, that everything is the same. And we do that with all departments, it's not, or in every board, it's not just this board.
The difference is, is your departments, if I'm not mistaken, are governing departments, is that correct?
And all of our boards that we appoint.
This board is an advisory board, not a governing board.
Appointed by the commissioners.
But they're not governing. They can't make or set policy.
I understand that, and there's boards that we are. The DSS is not a governing board.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Can I ask one thing? How many, how long has each person served? Jody, how long have you served?
I have no idea.
Okay, so I do have that information. And Jody Higgins actually rotated off the regional board after serving two terms. Regionally, if I don't have board members who, if they serve longer than two terms, then legally, I'm in the wrong. So there's not a single regional board member who has served longer than two terms. She served two consecutive terms, she rotated off for three years, and then I asked in 2021 and 22 for her to be reappointed to the local board and the regional board, to which I did not get an answer. And I'm just going to reiterate that, because we have to move on from that communication-wise.
Sure. But how long on the local board, Jody? I know you've been involved quite a while. And we appreciate it, I mean, we...
Teresa Coletta, if she's here, might...
No.
She's here.
I've been, I've been on the local board probably since the 70s.
50 years.
80s, maybe.
A long time.
I've always been interested in the library and how it serves the community. And when I went on the board, we were undertaking some, we were in the old building over there, and we were there for quite a while, and we began looking at, we had to find a new place, because we could not accommodate what we needed to do over there. So we eventually got this building. And I was involved with that, with the school board, and actually, this building was kind of going to be bulldozed down. And Minnie Powell, who's here, myself, Teresa, we put up an effort to save this building, Parkway Playhouse, and the Brown Door. The school board turned that, this building over to the county.
I started saying with a little help from the county.
Yes.
I wasn't involved in that process, but I remember you guys raising money and...
Yes, it was...
We turned it over with much pleasure.
Yes.
And we ensure it and stuff and...
And then I became involved to get this building ready to serve. And it took a lot of money, a lot of time, and it took us, I believe, over 10 years to raise the money. And then it took several more years to do the renovations. And that's one reason I was on the board for so long, because I was one of the people who was there in the beginning of that process, and helping move that along.
It took 12 long years.
Our experience was that when you had a board that members rotated on and off of so much, it was hard to keep things going in a positive direction. You were always having to bring new people on who didn't understand what was going on, or didn't agree with what was going on. And we, we had some good board members. I think when I first went on the board, Osdeaton was on the board. That's how long I've been on it. But we worked together as a board with Teresa, and we got this project completed. Raised the millions of dollars. The county borrowed a million dollars to finish up the project, or it had never gotten finished. We got a huge $300,000 grant through Charles Taylor, who was then our representative. Save America's Treasure Grants. It was all of us working together who were familiar with this project, who were familiar with the needs of the library. And so I just kind of got stuck in this, in this position for all those years, because we needed to complete this project. And I was dedicated to it, and wanted to see it happen.
And it turned out well.
I think it's very obvious that it's turned out well. I mean, this is a great facility, multi-use facility, as y'all have already stated, and what all you do with it. But we thank you for that.
And I can, I'll tell you one more thing, too. One reason why I'm on this board right now is because Everett Kivett left a trust to this library. And he, before his death, he, and while we were working on the plans for the library, he said he would leave a trust to the library if we would put a gallery in it. And if that gallery could be named the Haring Kivett Gallery, after two painting schools that were here. And Everett paid for the acclimatized storage room where the artwork is kept here, and bought museum-quality racks that were probably close to $100,000. The library currently gets annual payments from that trust, which is with the Community Foundation of Western North Carolina. And we use that money to operate the gallery, to maintain it. And I am the curator of that. I have a little office right over here, which, we put that office in there for someone who would be the curator of the gallery. And currently, we have another property that belongs to Everett, that I'm working with some folks who are interested in buying that property to turn it into an art, a studio, and continue what he wanted us to continue for him, that it would continue as a painting school, or a place where artists could work. And that money, when we sell that property, which I'm working with a real estate person and the people who are interested in doing that, that will bring another $100,000 to the Yancey Library as a trust. We also received a hundred...
Was it $100,000?
No, it's just over $100,000, so it's $130,000.
$130,000 from Toca Reinhardt, who was a big supporter of the Yancey County Public Library. We worked with Keith Presnel, who was the administrator of her estate. So combined with Toca's gift to our library and this, we will have nearly a quarter-million-dollar trust for this library.
And that's just for the Yancey Library?
That's just for the Yancey Library.
But that's not part of the regional system, that's just here.
And that's why I'm on here, and that's why I'm on the regional board right now, because the regional board has to approve that, because the Yancey County Library Board can't own property, it has to be owned by the regional library. So until we sell this property, Amber and I have to make sure that I'm on that board, so that we can get this process of getting this money back to Yancey County for this trust.
You're talking about the extra piece of property that gets sold to put into the trust?
Right, exactly.
Not this piece of property?
No, no.
No, I'm kidding, I was...
But we were, we were the only, I think we were the only library in the system that did not have some kind of a trust.
That's true.
Yeah. The Avery County has a very nice trust. The Mitchell County Library does, from... Mackby, Helen Mackby. And the Spruce Pine Library...
They do not have a trust.
They do not have a trust. But we're, we're getting in a position where we will have a very good trust that will make the world of difference for our library.
Let me just interject really fast. The Yancey Library receives more donations from donors than any of the libraries in our system. There are... It's incredible, and I would be, it would be so wrong of me to not mention the Friends of the Library, because without them, we wouldn't have the materials that we have, or the programs that we have. They helped fund this library as well. You're talking about a library that is funded by multiple sources.
So then, Mr. Larkin, how many years have you served?
Kind of paled. I think we all pale to what Jody's done. Yeah, I've been here since the, soon after the library moved to the building. Dan Barron was the regional director. He asked me to do that. I guess three terms, and I don't know when my term ends, no.
And the term's three years, right, so nine years?
Yes, but remember, according to these local bylaws, the term is... Is there anything I need to know?
The local bylaws doesn't have a term, is that right?
The local bylaws have, it states, members will be appointed for a... The local bylaws have, it states, members will be appointed for a term of three years or shall begin at the annual meeting. A member may be reappointed at the end of the third year. It means that every time they serve a term locally, they can be reappointed to serve locally. They just can't serve re- because they have to follow state statute with how many terms they can serve.
So after three years, though, they would come back to the commissioners for reappointment?
Yes, exactly. Which is why you received an email where I said we have Lu- we have, sorry, not Lucy's. We have Jody Daw- or Jo-. You're here, you're here. We have...
I done that last night.
I know you did. Um, Jody Higgins, who was asking to be reappointed, and then that's when I said Susie Buchanan has rotated off the regional board and would like to still serve locally.
Right, but Susie and Je- and Jeanette was on the same email, and then Jody was a separate?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, right. So we're on the same page, though. What about, Burl, was you there since nineteen, is that correct, or maybe before?
I was not here when Dan Barron was here.
Two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you. Well, things right. And I've done two terms on the regional board and rotated off.
Okay.
I also did two terms on the regional board while serving on this local board. I rotated off after six years. Amber has since tried to get me to come back, but I do work the full-time job. And it, it's kind of, my time gets a little crunchy sometimes, especially with the... But I have enjoyed serving, and I've been here several years. Um, it's, it's always, the library's been here, though.
It's been prior to my time as director.
Yeah, so I'm not really sure exactly how many years that's been. Years do go really fast. But I enjoy working with the library board, and Amber is such an athlete to, to this community, to this board, to this library. Books are so important. I've always thought that, believed that, books take you places that you normally wouldn't go. You could go from your front porch, your bedroom, your couch, wherever. It's just good to have a library that offers so very much. I like this one, yes.
Amber.
Hello. I go further back. I was the children's librarian here for almost fifteen years. And it's the best job I ever had. I'll just tell you, I enjoyed it so much. So my heart's here, and my heart is with what Amber does. She does a fantastic job. And I'm not sure, I didn't come on until Amber was here, so I'm really not sure.
I've been here eight years. So she was, she was nominated in two thousand and fifteen.
I have a little housekeeping item here. Jeff, that button there in front of you, could you pass it down this, no, the other one? I wondered what happened to that. I'm glad it didn't rain.
I will patch it for you.
So that's, that's why I was telling you is that Amber asked me to go back on the regional board, and I had to be the chair of this board to go on the regional board, to go back on the regional board so we can deal with this trust and the sale of this property and get this money back from the regional account, back into the Yanceys' account and back into a trust.
Our minutes show that you were recommended to the board.
That's right. You can't do that.
I can't.
So Jody, you're the chair?
I'm the chair of this board.
And Alan, you're a vice chair?
That's correct, you are a vice chair.
There you go, Alan.
We, we, we change that every two years. So we nominate those individuals every two years. Burl Carroll is the secretary of the Yancey County Library Board. You will not find a better secretary in the state of North Carolina.
Come on the board and type minutes. Give me a break.
Well, I can say, I'll interject here. I can remember as a, she probably don't want to be told this, you know, I'm fifty-nine years old, and she was an awesome school teacher.
She's the best, and you know, just to say that, these board members, they're incredible people. I don't know if any of you have ever served on boards where people don't show up or they don't come to the meetings, I'm sorry. I mean, sometimes you have to ask people to leave because they don't attend. So they're here every time. Every time something is happening with state aid or we have, because we have a lobbyist that we have through the North Carolina Public Library Directors Association. These are members who email our senators, our representatives, to make sure we have library funding. There's a requirement when you serve on the library board, it requires work.
That's true.
How often do you meet?
We meet quarterly, but we are only required to meet three times a year.
And you post those on your website? Do you post those for your...
Those meetings, you post those meetings on the website?
No, I don't think we do. We can.
Is, is it the same with, throughout the regional library? Mitchell and Avery, they meet the same?
They meet the same as well. Advisory boards.
Right, right, not regional, but the advisory, right. Local boards.
Yes, and also you receive those minutes, correct?
Yes.
From the local board?
Yes. You should receive those minutes.
From Burl? Don't think I received those. But if we could start, that would be great.
Yeah, that'd be great. No, you're not supposed to do that.
Yeah, right? Yeah, we don't get them from the library. Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I always thought you did.
Do you send them?
It wouldn't be me.
Who sends them?
Something to find out. I would actually ask our CFO, who handles operations like that. Hey, actually, Mitchell Allen gives those to you. He gives, he gives those to you whenever he applies for state aid each year. He's our CFO. You receive those minutes in a packet.
So he turns them in when they ask for their funds for Brandy?
I'm only stating that because I think when you read the minutes, you see how our library board reads them.
And we get like financials and different things, usually that's what that requires is to get financials. But that does need to be put in your packets for review.
Microphones.
Oh, sorry. But we'll get that in for the packets.
How long has Julia Fox been on?
Julia Fox is, Julia Fox has been on the board. She just rotated off the regional library system one year ago. So, yes. It is also imperative for me to speak that Burl Carroll and Julia Silvers, not Fox, are both media coordinators in our county. They are librarians in our schools. So whenever we do collaborative work with, with libraries, they are significant as far as partnering with us. So it's a really good fit for the board.
There are a lot of advantages to having people on your local board who serve more than three years or, because you have... You have continuity, you have people who are in the school system. And I've seen where, in other counties that we're with, where boards were rotating, the commissioners decided they wanted them rotating constantly. And when I went to those meetings, people didn't, the people weren't aware if they were on the regional board or local board. They didn't know what was going on. It was very dysfunctional. Having some continuity is good, sort of like in county commissioners, when you have rotating term. You know, you have some people who serve two years, some who serve four. That gives you some continuity. You have board members, say like Johnny Riddle, who served how many years? Twelve. Or John Renfro, by the way. You know, continuity is good when you're trying to get things accomplished, especially on an advisory board like ours, a local library board.
Well, I want to say that what, what we're trying to get here, I know the, the citizens of the county are wondering all about this board stuff and why we're talking so much about the board, but I do want to say this. And I want to give an example. The chairman of the Yancey County Board of Education's here tonight, and he can attest to this. Been a commissioner now for eleven years, gone on twelve. And communication, until the recent board changes in several of our departments and our boards that we, that we get to interact with, there's not been any communication in the past. What we're trying to do here is to establish a rapport with every single department that we have and with every single board and every organization that we fund, because it's imperative. It's obvious, for instance, a twenty-year agreement from a board twenty years ago, you know, we need to have some continuity, we need to have some standards, and that's why we have bylaws, that's why we have the things put in place to make sure that those things happen. There's not been any communication like it should be with our board and the library board in the past, and there's, and I'm not saying they're not communication systems, not like it should be. That's why we have, that's why we're wanting to do things.
Please explain should.
Huh?
Please explain should.
Should.
The way it should be.
Like, like we're talking about, ha- have a director or a representative of this board or this, the regional library come before the board of commissioners on a regular basis like we've started for the last two years?
Yes.
Making sure that people...
And prior to COVID, I did give reports regularly.
And you did.
And I'm getting right back on it, I just saved you for the last...
No, listen, and I'm not pointing fingers, I'm saying it's the, the fault of being so lax with former boards and the commissioners, and I was on it, and boards just, we get so apathetic sometimes with our, the way we do things.
That's true.
And, and what we're wanting to do, we want to establish something here that keeps this library the best.
I agree, but I'm...
We want to be better than Mitchell, we want to be better than Avery.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with that. But I'm going to tell you, though, that I agree with you completely, but I'm also going to be a thorn in your side because I'm just like that. The timing of asking so much about board terms is something that I take personally. When you make a statement about pulling away from a library system without communicating prior to us, our board...
And that's why I said in motion that we, we start the process, and this is part of the process, and we want to make sure that we do it right.
I know, but it's the elephant in the room, so I had to mention it, and I have the utmost respect for you, Jeff, but I still have to ask that.
Absolutely, and it's a legitimate question, but if everybody had been at the meeting when, when we were there, they would have clearly understood. We have set a precedence on this board that we are wanting to make everything, as much as we can, in-house in Yancey County for a reason. And we will want to make sure...
We need to explain in-house in Yancey County to me in regards to what I do as regional director.
And it's not, not to do with anything that you do with regional director. We have since found out that this is impossible for us to do. We're fine with it. Our example is the health department. We were in a regional health department to better the services. We were going to break away from that regional health department, make it an in-house department, which we have, and services are much better, expanding and doing better. Don't know that we could expand or do any better than what you've done, and we appreciate that.
Thank you for saying that.
Absolutely, and I'm in it for my life. We, we have, we have to make sure that we're accountable for the eighteen thousand people, not any group, not any political group or anything else, for eighteen-plus thousand people in this county. And we have to make some tough decisions sometimes. One of those decisions was the way that, that I wanted to go, at least, and we found out, so we're going to try to do things a little different. So there you go. I mean, it's that in a nutshell, never wanted to defront anything or make anything less. So anyway, the reason we're asking about all these board appointments is because we're, you know, it's not been established in the past because of an agreement. We want to make sure that everything's done in a bylaws. We want to make, just like we do with every other department and with every other funding organization that we give, we want to make sure that there's a level, it's a level playing field. Everything's the same with everybody.
I can appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just want to tell you something that maybe you all don't know. Throughout my years of being the regional library director, and there was a terrible time when Mitchell County was going to pull out of the regional library system because they weren't getting no way. And it was Yancey County that held their feet to the fire. And if you all, I mean, you have never failed the library system. You have always been, not because I'm...
Nor would we ever.
Well, not because I'm a native of Yancey County, but I knew I could always count on Yancey County commissioners. Mitchell County, not so good. Avery County, most of the time. And I want to salute the, the Avery County library staff for being here this evening.
Yes.
But I just want to say thank you. I know the hour's getting late and people are hungry, but your support through the years, not just with Amber, but almost to the beginning of the time, that you were one of the first group of local governments to come on board and say, yes, we need a regional library system. You saw all the advantages, and you've never wavered. So I personally am indebted to you as Amber's.
Thank you very much, Teresa. And I think, I think it goes without saying, our commitment when we borrowed a million dollars that we're having to pay back to help this library out. I think that goes without saying that we're committed to, to making sure that there's a library here and the library's run to the best of its ability. And that, you're doing a great job, keep up the good work. But we just want to establish some rapport here. That's not an agreement because of somebody else in the past. We need to make sure that this thing is set, because this board's going to change, your board's going to change. That way, we don't have miscommunications, everything's the same going forward.
Surely there's money in that trust that these doors can be fixed.
We had that discussion a while ago, Teresa. Not from the trust, but we did have that, I, I think it was before COVID, if I'm not mistaken, that was part of the plan to get rid of this and make this room a lot bigger.
Yes, we had a...
And push the gallery doors back, and we have a fantastic larger room.
We had a flooding incident here, but the doors are stuck. We'll, we'll take that under advisement.
I think the air conditioning's stuck, too.
Last year, the heat and air conditioning didn't work.
Any questions from staff? Any questions from the board? Y'all have questions?
I think that's... Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn.
No, no, no.
Public comment.
We, we can adjourn, and y'all can proceed. So do I hear a motion to adjourn the county meeting? Go here a second.
No? You're leaving.
I have an immediate. No, that's not, our mission, we're... See, see, hang on. You don't understand, we're not going away. Our, our, our meeting is adjourned, so it's officially over. He has a meeting to go to, and he has an obligation, so he's going to go. But we're sitting, we're sitting right here, we're sitting right here.
Wayne Edwards was gracious enough to introduce himself. I apparently am not from here, and I don't know who all of you are. In fact, I had one person ask me, who's the guy in the bow tie? So is it possible, is it possible that these people who are s- who are speaking and going, okay, so my, my email, yeah, you, yeah, is it possible that you would introduce yourselves to the rest of us?
Sure.
Well, I'm David Grinstaff, county commissioner.
Thank you.
I'm Sandy Norton, county commissioner.
Jeff Witson, county commissioner.
Mark Littford, county commissioner.
Morgan West, clerk to the board.
Lynn Austin, Yancey County manager. And I will say, we're missing Stacy McIntyre-Green. She is in Raleigh this afternoon at a workshop meeting, and will be there this week, so she's missed these two meetings, not normally.
And the guy in the bow tie.
The guy in the bow tie. The guy in the bow tie.
Everybody not known?
I'm Donnie Lawes, I'm the county attorney.
The best mistake, by the way.
Are you missing, is there one county commissioner who was not here?
Yeah, she just explained that.
That's Stacy McIntyre-Green, and she's in Raleigh this afternoon.
Okay, I'm Jody Higgins, I'm the Chair of the Yancey Library Board.
Alan Larkins.
Pearl Carroll.
Gail Parker.
Susan McCannan.
I'm Januvi, I've only been here a few months, and I'm in charge of the mascot, Curious George. Curious George lost his mama at birth, I have been taking care of him since, and he is very curious and always gets into trouble. I'm a retired veterinarian, so, you know, what else could I do? Well, I'm Soren, my name is Jeanette Maddox.
I really appreciate the lady asking for you all to introduce yourselves, because while I have lived here for eighteen years, I did not have names to go to these faces. I will remember your face, I might remember your name, but it greatly increased the likelihood that I will. So thank you for whoever asked for that. Thank you.
Oh, and we meet the second Monday of every month at six o'clock. Love to have her's participation.
At the courthouse, Jeff, at the courthouse, not here.
At the courthouse.
We're just taking a minute to get settled for public comments. While they're doing that, could it be set on the agenda for the next Commissioner's meeting to appoint the board members that Amber has requested of twenty-two?
Yeah, and just to approve the board members.
Thank you. And Rina's already said that she would.
Yeah, just send one of those letters to, by email, because we have a signature form. She has, she has a formal letter that she sends. Yeah, that goes in our agenda packet.
Send it to me. I'm sending it to you.
Yes. She's a clerk.
All right, these are folks who signed up to make public commentary. Uh, number one is Angela Norris.
And just like last night's meeting, we'll follow the standard rules, three minutes per speaker, and I will let you know when it's three minutes.
Okay, since I spoke last night, I will not take long, but I wanted to finish my point, and the three minutes goes very fast. Um, I have never not had a library card, I love libraries, when I married my husband two years ago, it was the first thing I made him do, come here and get a library card, because he had never had a library card. Um, this is not about hate for me, like I said, I have a lesbian daughter, I love her, accept her, I love everybody, I feel everybody has the right to live their life the way that they want to. My thing is, kids shouldn't be exposed to political agendas in a safe space like a library. Everything Wayne said, everything Amber said about the services, and everything the displays, all that is great. Politics should be out of it, it should be neutral, groups should be in an area that a parent can choose whether they want their kid to read that book or not. Christian literature has a section, nonfiction, fiction, LGBTQIA could have a section, my problem is, it's right in their face, and there is an agenda going on in this country, it is a problem, and that's where I come from. Um, I am totally in line with Yancey County being standalone in anything that we can, and.
No.
No, that's where I stand, and thank free time, I'm taking three minutes.
Uh, next on our list is Karen Dobregos.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Karen Dobregos.
Is it working yet?
My name is Karen Dobregos, and I have worked at the library for the past twenty years, until my retirement last September, as the Children's Services Coordinator, and I worked at all four of our libraries in three different counties. Uh, I've provided hundreds, if not thousands, of storytimes and programs for kids and parents, and daycares, and Head Start classrooms over these years. I've worked under the guidance of four different library directors and dozens of staff, and our goal has always been service to the community, all the community, whoever walks through these doors. The library has always been a welcoming place, as our community grew and diversified, which I think is a beautiful thing. The library's collection and displays also grew and adapted to continue our vision of acceptance and inclusion, and that all people feel welcome within these walls, and all people are seen and valued and respected. And there's a wonderful kids' book that I would read every year to the kids, it's called The Big Umbrella, written by Amy June Bates, where there's this big red umbrella, and it grows and grows and grows as more people and neighbors and animals seek shelter under the, from the rain, and the book so lovingly shows that there's room for everybody under that umbrella. It's my hope of this county and our county commissioners, who are elected to represent all the people in our county.
Yes.
Continue to value the service our regional library provides for our community, and may the library's umbrella continue to grow and welcome and serve all our people. Thank you.
Uh, number three on our list is Fred Cromer. Come on down, Fred.
Good evening, I'm Fred Cromer, a resident of Burnsville, and I want to firstly thank the board members and the council commissioners for enabling us to enjoy this great democracy tonight. I think it's pretty cool. Um, as a matter of fact, I'm responsible for doing that reading material, because I heard there was some contentious issues about the pride, uh, display in the library, and having family members and friends in that community, the LGBTQ plus community, I didn't hear the whole story of that, okay? So, I thought it was a wonderful thing, as a matter of fact, I very much enjoyed coming in here at the time they had banned books. I went over to the table and looked, God, I read all those, and I didn't go to the dark side. And then, of course, the celebration of Black History Month, that was cool, what, what's the other one?
Women's history.
Pacifica Island.
Of course. But, uh, you all took a little bit of wind out of my sail relative to the initiative, uh, as far as the regional library goes, so that's it, I'll close, thank you all very much for your time.
Uh, next I have Anna Christ, I'm not butchering that name. You go past, okay, thank you, all right. Um, Cindy Gibson.
Hello, everyone, sorry, my voice right now, but I just wanted to thank everyone for being here tonight. Thank you for being here tonight, everyone, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for doing the research and not just making a decision straight off the bat. Your, this is what this community is about, we can have disagreements, we can think differently, it's okay, we talk about it, communication is key, as we determined tonight, and I just wanted to say that, I think everyone knows about the book displays and about the programs that the library does, so just thank you, and let, how about we continue this community forum? It doesn't have to be just about libraries, it can be everything about Yancey County, and maybe that happens at a commissioner meeting, but let's open that platform for people to speak, thank you.
Wayne, please tell everybody about that Cindy is a former librarian.
Oh, yeah, Cindy was our, our former, um, um, branch manager here, uh, before me, I worked under her for a while.
She was great.
And we miss her sometimes. I miss her a lot of days. Timothy Barrier, all right, take it away, sir.
Hello, I'm new to the community, I've been in this area about a year, just over a year, my wife is at home, she's had fifteen spine surgeries, so she couldn't make it. We have a bunch of chickens, you guys need eggs. I want to come back to the point of the finances, I believe, which is the decision being made, this is a hot-button topic for everybody in all diversities, and I do apologize on behalf of the Christian community, because Christ himself said that he didn't come to condemn the world, but to save it. And the kingdom is before you, it's our little children that, that we should all be welcoming, every little child, if you throw away opportunities for a child, you're not being Christ-like. So count all of the, um, maybe cruel comments that other Christians have made, and place them on my account, I will speak to the Lord about it later. To the, to the point of what we're speaking of, it seems as though we're not trying to eliminate a, a group of people, but to eliminate funding, maybe, I'm wrong in saying eliminate funding from the state, but I don't know how many of you people were at the Monday meeting last month, do you remember the, it was the, the finances?
Yeah, that's when we, when we approved the budget.
Okay, the budget approval, that was two meetings ago, I believe, this county is absolutely amazing in that, we've got EMS that is funded by Yancey County, Fire Department funded by Yancey County.
That's, that's, that's fire tax.
Fire tax?
EMS.
EMS, okay, EMS funded by Yancey County. Yancey County is becoming very independent, which I believe is awesome, and I'll ask you this, not to raise hands or, or whatever, but maybe answer it in your heart, um, can we all maybe agree, possibly, don't answer out loud or even raise your hand, that the government has failed us, and I don't blame the people at all, I am humbled to speak before you, and I'm, you've done amazing, the government procedure is in and of itself, we are to care for our neighbors, to love one another, no matter the diversity, and if the funding does get cut, I do believe that nobody, Christian, non-Christian, LGBT, I don't believe that anybody in this community would let this library fall, I think we could probably all agree on that. So rather than stirring up emotions and fighting with one another, let's love one another as Christ taught us to do, and maybe encourage our board members to be strong in it as a community, rather than leaning on somebody who's failed us over and over. Thank you.
Uh, next on the list is Minnie Powell.
I don't really have anything to add to what other people have said, but my heart goes out to this library board, especially to Jody, especially to Amber, and to Teresa Coletta, who has worked so hard to make the Yancey County Public Library one of the finest libraries in the state, and the fact that it is available and so beautiful is because of the work of those people and people in this community. And, you know, diversity is so important, because we don't all want to be like me, we don't all want to be like you, we have to be different, and in accepting our differences and in loving the people that are different, we're stronger, and that's, that's all I've got to say.
Well, the aforementioned Ms. Coletta, Teresa.
Now, I'm just gonna tell you a little story. The floor here, it's beautiful, as you well imagine, the small wood, I mean, uh, in, in renovating this, saving things was top priority, because, yeah, they take your, yeah, they take your, yeah. Anyway, just gonna tell you a brief little story, I was, I, I was gonna say something else, but I, mainly my support for the commissioners, you've already heard about that, so, but anyway, can't say enough about that, though, but anyway, this beautiful floor, uh, do you remember, anybody remember Jim Priestmar?
Yes.
Well, I employed him, because, you know, as Amber knows, you can only be in so many places at one time, and so he was kind of my gopher, and, uh, and he did a good job, in all fairness, but be that as it is, he took it upon himself to take up all this floor, and this floor is beautiful, and it was to be preserved, and you can imagine my furious fury when I realized, neat little bundles that we were gonna sell him for a song, and because we were gonna put down carpet, and he had never asked me about it, so he took it upon, upon himself to dig up, and it was in, it was in awful shape what he did, and I said, you asshole, I'm going to find it. And I did, that was the best thing I did that day, but anyway, we had to put all of this back down. He said, well, it's no big deal, you can just put, I said, no, this is important, this, I mean, unfortunately, you know, planks, you know, bump and bubble, and so it was a real problem, but we put it back down, and, mm, I don't know where he is, but I hope he has long left the building. Thank you.
Next on our list is Buddy McIntyre.
I'm glad I didn't take the floor up. I was on the board at that time. Hi, y'all. Hey, buddy. No, and I do appreciate that things have turned out as they had, because I was feeling a great sense of loss if they had not. I'm eighty years old, and I have grown up with the library, I'm not gonna get emotional. I started my relationship with the library out at Ball Creek, where I was raised, with the bookmobile, and then I grew up, and I moved to Burnsville after I got married, and began to use, I've used four different libraries. The first one was down under Pacifica Restaurant, and then I moved up to Academy Street, and then it moved into the old bank building, and now look. And it's been a part of my life, I'm here lots of days, today I checked out two books off the table, local authors, one of the ladies grew up in Asheville, I'd never heard of her, so I checked that number out. I keep a journal, I've read thirty-three books this year so far, I write about each one, and I make a list of, of the authors, so I can go back and get more of their books if I like them, and I write down if I do, and if I don't, I write it down. At any rate, the library has broadened my perspective on so many things, and I appreciate it so much, and, hey, Gail. I've been on the local board, I've been on the regional board, but, um... But if our library continues as it has, it will one day, I'd hate to leave this building. It's fantastic. It's history. But we might help grow it, you know? Burnsville and the county is growing. We just add on. We'll just enlarge, we might raise the roof. But at any rate, I'm so, so proud of it that we will, we live to see another day. And maybe I'll live another few years, who knows?
Next on our list is Gil Rowe. Yeah, I was going to say, can you folks pass the microphone to Gil?
I'm representing the friends of the library. My heart is in this library. I'm not a native. I asked, "What do you have to be to be a native?" And they said, "Six generations, six feet under." So I'm not there. But my heart is here. I was the president when we first moved to this building. I followed Patty McCall, who was the first president, and I happened to be the second president. And I came to this town and my first meeting was in this room right here with the first Board members of the Board. And we had a lot of books coming in. And they said, "What are we going to do with all these books?" And I said, "Well, let's start a store." And I said, "Downstairs is the cellar." And that's the place we could start. It was a lousy place, but we cleaned it up. And I helped put up shelving. And that was our first offer of just selling books to the community. And you people have been so supportive of us. We are now in our tenth year. Once we had filled, once we had filled the cellar downstairs, I came back from my hometown of Florida and I saw this empty building down in the square. And I said, "Please, let's start a store here. We need another store. Our cellar is full." And they said, "No, we can't do that. What are we going to do when all the people go home in the winter?" And I just kept talking and talking. And for long, they said, "Oh, all right, we'll try it for three months and see how it's going to work out." Well, here we are in our tenth year and two stores, all because of you. The annex, we've done several things. When I was President of the Board, I suggested that we do some scholarships for our high school people. This year, we gave out eight scholarships of $2,000 each. The kids are going to cross these gates. We're proud of our volunteers who work so hard. And they are volunteers. We only have one paid person, and that's the person who's taking care as the managers of all of the two stores. I would like everybody who worked at the bookstore to stand. These are your people. Stand above the people who work in the bookstore. There we are. Last year at Halloween, we gave out 1,503 books to the kids on Halloween. Instead of giving out candy, we're giving out books. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Gil. Next on our list, Megan Graham.
So I will echo, too tall. I will echo what folks have said and say, "Thank you for being here. I know I would just like to serve on the Board, I'm on many, so thank you." I want to start by saying that someone's sexual orientation and gender identity isn't and shouldn't be on a political agenda. It is their life. So I just want to start by saying that... I've heard that stuff a couple of times and I just want to make sure I've said that correctly. Thank you. I am a native. I grew up in Mitchell County. I live here, I work here, I serve here. I'm a social worker. Another part of my service is I serve on the Suicide Prevention Community of Practice for SAMSA. That's the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administrator of the federal government. Our goal is to bring people together and talk about suicide prevention. How do we protect and save lives? So I want to share a couple of statistics. Suicide is the second leading cause of death for fifteen to twenty-four-year-olds. The second cause of death. For the LGBTQ plus community, that is four times higher. So the risk is four times higher. And not because someone is born gay, not because they identify as LGBTQ plus, but because of discrimination and because of a lack of acceptance. So I have spent much of my personal life and my career thinking about, "How do we save our youth? How do we protect lives and how do we prevent suicide?" And I will tell you, one of the most important ways we do that is by having gender-affirming spaces. Spaces where someone can walk in and feel seen and visible and accepted. I think about this community as, we are supposed to be Southern hospitality. We invite people, we welcome people, we pull up a seat to the table. We do not exclude people. We do not exclude people. And one of those spaces where people should feel visible is the public library. Of all the places to go. If you can walk into a library and read a book and identify with that character, you feel seen. Sometimes these shelves are packed with books, and I'm thankful for that. But sometimes we don't know what's on that shelf. So a book display helps us to see, maybe that's a book that I can identify with. I can feel seen, I can feel accepted. So I just want to say that if we want to prevent suicide in this community, we need to make sure that we are taking care of all of our youth. And that our youth feel invited, welcomed, and accepted.
Thank you, Megan. And last but not least on our list is Jackie Moss.
I should have gone before Megan. And I apologize, I wrote this down, but I didn't want to forget any of the points I wanted to make. I was a professional educator for my entire career. I have retired to Yancey County and now I'm a community volunteer. However, my family has been in Catawba County since the early 1700s, so even though I grew up in the north, I have cred. And I wanted to share my bias, and it is, like I said, very much like Megan's. Living one's authentic life is not a political agenda. It is a human right. I missed last night's meeting because...